We call the Genoa Township Planning Commission meeting for May 12th, 2025 to order. Excuse me. Our first item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If you please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the agenda. Can I get the motion?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none passes unanimously. And we move on to the declaration of conflict of interest. Do any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest with cases of this evening? Hearing none will open the first call to the public. This first call to the public is for those who are here for something other than the items on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? All right. Hearing none, I'll close the call to the public and open up our first public hearing. Consideration of a sketch plan for an accessory building for food, which will be ice cream serviced at the existing Tap In's location at 4444 East Grand River Avenue, south side of Grand River, west of Parkway Drive. The request is petitioned by Mr. Cade Martin. Is Mr. Cade Martin here? Come on up. That's your table for right now. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, Cade Martin, founder of Tap In's in Howell, Michigan, 4444 East Grand River Avenue, right across the street from Aubrey's Pizzeria.
And Scott Duziant, Boss Engineering, 3121 East Grand River Avenue, Howell, Michigan. And the sketch plan we have before you is to make permanent the Gimme's trailer that's out there right now, right adjacent to the existing building. The use of that Gimme's trailer is partially for the ice cream, but in order to keep customers unnecessarily out of the building that only want to use putt-putt, they also just run their putt-putt out of that same trailer they're selling the ice cream out of. So we're just looking to make the trailer permanent, take the wheels off, put it up on block foundation, and add a skirting around it so you wouldn't really be able to know that it was a trailer. So again, just to make it more permanent, there is like a landscape rock area around it, about 700 square feet in area with a couple paver stones to get people back and forth. So other than that, that's really as simple as it gets, as far as I'm concerned, just a single sheet. So if there are any questions, we'll be happy to address them after the.
Let's see if Brian can address some of those first. Go ahead, Brian.
I'll do my very best. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So procedurally, again, as Scott kind of mentioned, this is a relatively minor project in the big scope of things. So this is in front of you for sketch plan review and approval. Because it is just a sketch plan, Planning Commission does have review and approval authority. So this is within your purview. If you see fit this evening, you can go ahead and ask this or reject this, but it's your decision to make, not a recommendation to the board. So as was mentioned, there's been, I guess, I don't know if ongoing is the right phrasing. I know it's been out there for some time. So there's been a portable trailer that they've been serving ice cream using as food service, et cetera. It's been a bit of an ordinance issue for the township to deal with. So they are proposing basically to take that same structure, but to convert it into a more permanent building at face value. As was noted, I think that means, I think the wheels are going to be removed and skirting will be placed around it. So visually, you will not know that it was a trailer. And then taking it a step further, whatever is going to be required of the county building department to ensure that it is actually a safe and sound building at some point. So I don't know if that involves anything with foundations or what that might entail to basically ensure that this now building is a secure structure. So whatever that will take, that will take. But that's basically the idea here is the conversion of this trailer. In terms of applying the handful of accessory building standards that you have in your ordinance, on my review, I found those to be met. So anything related to dimensional requirements, so the height of it, the size of it, the setbacks, spacing between buildings are all in compliance with your ordinance. Because this is a new request on a previously developed site, this is something that I will, you'll hear me almost every month when this happens. So I'll bring it up again, though. If there are other issues onsite, if there are anything or any other areas where there's either a lack of compliance with the approved site plan, or if some things have maybe fallen into disrepair, and I generally use landscaping as the most obvious one. So if some trees have unfortunately not blossomed this spring, and they may have died over the winter, or maybe they're diseased, whatever, this is a good opportunity for us to note that and require that those be replaced as opposed to Amy having to go around and look for dead trees everywhere and make sure that people replant them accordingly. But it's not just limited to landscaping. So if there are other areas or other concerns that staff or the commission have, I do think this would be an opportune time to raise those for discussion with the petitioner and the project engineer. And that's pretty much all I have. I don't know how much Shelby will have on this one, but obviously want to consider anything from an engineering standpoint. Make sure that, I don't know if there's an increase in impervious surface or stormwater issues, but want to make sure we get engineering addressed as well.
Right, thank you. Shelby?
So I don't have too much on this. I did have a comment just on the increase of impervious surface. I just thought it was worth noting. I don't think, it's very small, and I don't think there is any existing storm facilities onsite to size anyways. So yeah, I just thought it was worth mentioning. I'm not too overly concerned about it, but it's, you know, the small building and the gravel would slightly increase your impervious surface of the site. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And looking at the Brighton Area Fire Authority indicates that the Fire Authority has no objections to the existing temporary use revised to a permanent access structure. So it sounds like you're in good shape there as well. Any questions for the petitioner?
Scott, I believe I heard you say something about, is this previously used as an office component for the golf?
Just the putt-putt. If somebody wants to do just putt-putt, just in an effort to keep unnecessary people in, like where the simulators, kitchen bar areas, they'll do the putt-putt sale right there as well with the ice cream.
So is it all, is it one building that accommodates those, both of those things?
It's just the one trailer and the, what, one person in the trailer? Maybe two, one?
And they attain payment for golfing, for the putt-putt? Okay, okay. And there's a
And ice cream.
And ice cream, okay. Right, okay.
Every time I drive by your place, it's busy.
Thank you.
I do have a question, though. In reference to, I looked up in our, in our book of, in our glossary of definitions, I didn't see definition for permanent. I only know the definition of permit from a, permanent, from a standpoint of a mobile home, right? It's got an axle, it's on wheels, you can move it, which is essentially what we're talking about here, correct? You've got wheels and it needs to be permanent, not temporary, where you can just drive it off, right?
Correct. So what they do for the manufactured homes, ultimately they do take the wheels off the axle and they support it. There's a number of different ways you can do it. Pier foundations, strip footings, concrete pads, et cetera. And then they just use cinder block or something of the like ultimately to take the place of the axle itself, so.
So I saw what was referenced here in terms of what they were going to put it on blocks, correct?
Yeah, and ultimately this will need to go through, once land use, or if approval, you know, is granted here and then land use issued, ultimately this would go through building department for the permitting on the foundation. So it's possible that they do require something more permanent. Typically, or what you would see in this situation, since there is no like sanitary facility, so there's no plastic pipe coming out of here for a bathroom or something, to be permanently affixed to the ground is not as critical. So even if there's an inch or two heaved in the ground, it's, again, because there's no permanent fixation to the ground itself via a pipe or a water line or something like that, it's just electricity going out there. Then that, that gives a little bit more flexibility on what you can do with the foundation. But ultimately, the building department may indicate you need a full, again, it may be just piers, it may be a full, you know, three and a half foot deep strip footing.
Right. And I guess that would be my concern from a couple of standpoints is we've had some terrific winds around here, and we've had, just saw the roof of a building ripped off, what, 40 miles from here a couple weeks ago. From a permanent standpoint, I would hate a liability to happen if that thing, you know, suddenly got dislodged because of weather conditions. I don't know what that impacts from an insurance standpoint, from you, from the township. I'm just, I would want to know that that permanent is preventative of any accidents or foreshadowings of it moving and hurting somebody or something. So I guess the building department has a say in it, but that's my initial concern upfront, so.
One question. Did you say there's no plumbing to this building?
There is not any plumbing that is attached from our main building to the trailer, no.
How do you keep things clean? I mean, you got ice cream, you got scoops, you've got things that you're cleaning out all the time. How does that work?
It's got its own inside sanitary system, just like an RV would work. Got a gray water tank, a clean water tank. We fill it, we drain it every single day when it's in use.
Thanks.
It definitely gets cleaned out.
Thank you. And Ryan?
How do you provide, I see on the plan here, it's electrical connection for trailer next to existing light posts. Do you run like an extension cord?
We have it professionally wired underground, and it's, there's a breaker valve at the northwest corner of the trailer.
Underground?
Yeah, it was trenched underground. Electricity was ran to that, to a separate pole. It has a breaker switch at that pole. Weatherproof.
How many months of the year are you operating this building in comparison to the other building?
We do try to open ice cream as early in the year as possible. This year, we opened around April 17th, and we will close around October 1st. The season really slows down when kids go back to school in the first week of September. So not much of a reason to keep it open longer than October 1st timeframe with Michigan weather.
So no more than seven months roughly?
Correct.
In reviewing our master plan for 2023, there are two pages dedicated to pop-up temporary and mobile uses. And specifically discusses the benefits of temporary retailing. It strikes me that this might be our first example of that as a community and that our ordinance, our zoning ordinance, hasn't caught up to those goals and objectives from that master plan. And I know that's being revisited anyways. But I did want to bring that up. In looking at this project, I think it's fair to say that it actually meets the intent of our currently adopted master plan. And it's just our ordinance, which is not congruent with it at this time. And so, you know, in principle, from the information I have right now, I don't have any issues with this. I think for us, I would ask that in the future, this might be something for us to look at before too many requests come before us.
It is on the agenda right after the master plan gets updated. We don't want to do, budget-wise, we'd like to do it all at once. So yes.
Yeah. But I do agree with our master plan. It can be an incubator for placemaking if done correctly. So, and I imagine that's what you've seen, right?
It's been incredible for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tremendously helped the flow of the business. People don't need to come inside of our main building just to go play putt-putt. And then obviously putt-putt and ice cream go hand in hand with each other, so.
And you don't want those putt-putt people mingling with serious golfers.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's actually safer.
It is definitely safer.
For when the people walk in and stuff, it's safer.
Shelby, how, how much of an increase of impervious surface was there? And the reason I'm asking that is, let's say it's 20 square feet and not that much. Would you be willing to put something in that is, or something that could absorb water? Landscaping or bushes or flower bed or something? Because when I first looked at this, I was like, oh, that's kind of cool. You got a box flower bed right there in front? And then I thought, oh, no, that's just a painting because you've got the windows right there. And I'm just trying to see if we can keep as much ground, you know, water absorbing material there.
So it's about 750 square feet of, we'll call it improved surface, okay? That'll be combination of the roof on the building, those two-by-two paver blocks, and the decorative stone that's surrounding those pieces. So about 750 square feet. Of that 750 square feet, just under 300, so about 40% of it is actually hard surface, like the pavers in the building. That decorative stone is, it's like a black, I don't know what the name for it is, but it's an angular stone. So it's not like a contractor storage yard where it's, there's a lot of finds in it too, and it basically becomes a roadbed. So because it is more decorative, you have those gaps in the rocks. So even if we were to put, say, like a rain garden right next to the place, the water really wouldn't get there because it's still just going to seep right into the dirt underneath the rocks. So really the only opportunity would be the roof of the trailer.
Okay, thanks.
So the void volume of the materials sufficient for the rainwater adjacent coming off the off?
I haven't done a calculation on that way, so to speak specifically to that, I can't. But the NRCS soil survey indicates this area is Hillsdale loam, which is a hydrologic soil group B, which does promote infiltration. So that in conjunction with, you know, historical, I don't know exactly when the trailer was put up with the paver areas, but was it last year? Yeah, last year. But there hasn't been, per record of the owner, there has not been any puddling of any kind in this area of the decorative stone. So those two things put together, it's handling itself in its book, right?
Anyone else?
We've got fencing, existing four-foot tall black vinyl chain, layer fence. Is there anything in our ordinance for signage, posters, or fencing? I thought I read Article 11 that there was, I don't know if you have, I haven't been there this year so far, but I do go there a couple of times here. It's a great place. I'm glad to see you guys there. I just, I can't remember if there was anything in there for signs and fencing.
I think you're talking about the banners that are on the fence.
That's, that's it, the, the, yes.
Correct. Those are not allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, so those aren't, those are not allowed on the fence.
Okay.
Parking lot facing, parking lot non-facing?
I don't think it distinguishes.
Yeah, it does not distinguish in there. But I mean, parking lot facing, I would say you would not be able to have those. Because your advertising, that signage, you can do temporary signs. We have a temporary sign ordinance for 40, 45 days. And I can give you a copy of the app and I can just email it to you to let you know what you can do. But you wouldn't be allowed to put them on the fence.
Understood. We honestly don't put the signs there. We have liquor representatives, beer representatives that hound us for any space that they can get. So they just willingly go out there and put these things on there. And we just don't take them down, honestly. They replace them, but understood.
I think I want to ask one question, just because the township manager mentioned it to me also. And I think we've talked about it, and I think we've talked about it in our meetings, about parking.
Yes.
I know that you guys are, that's on in the future?
That is, that is the goal, yes.
All right. I know that you're working with the property owner.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So is that, does that sound like it's in the works to expand the parking?
That is the goal.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
That is the goal, to expand the parking.
Okay. And there's room there to do that?
On the northeast end of the property.
So it'll be towards the road, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Already where the pre-existing parking lot is, it would just be extended.
Yeah, the property looks to extend, if we, actually, yeah, the top right corner of the sheet. Property looks to extend almost to Parkway Drive, right up to that right of way at least, so.
And I believe you said you were working with the property owner?
We are.
Okay, yeah.
Not an easy process, but we are working.
When that improvement does come along, it'd be ideal to also make sure that the sidewalk is installed along Grand River there as well, because
How long has it been, it's waited?
So is that all done?
Yeah, I saw you done.
Oh, all right. I'm looking at their photos.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was done.
Spring of January.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else from up front?
Well, it's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
Have to expand your parking, that's an awesome problem to have.
Have you spoke to the building department and the health department yet?
We're fully approved from the health department, fully approved from the building department.
Seems odd.
All right, at this point, I'd like to make a call to the public. If there's anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak on this issue, please step forward to the microphone and podium and state your name and address.
Hello, Jeff DeHainen, 5494 Sharp Drive. Totally agree with what Commissioner Roush spoke about in temporary. What I originally was thinking was, hey, ice cream, it's all seasonal thing. This totally makes sense for food trucks. Again, something that'd be temporary. I did not realize you were using this as an office, too. I just imagine that once you hit September, October, November, December, you're probably not going to staff the office, which got me again back to the food truck piece. You could bring it in, take it out, bring it back in the spring, take it back out in the winter. But still totally in support of it, and I hope that the master plan, all of our zoning catches up with food trucks in Genoa Township.
It will.
I'm sure it will.
To clarify, and it's a good clarification to ask, the office use is specific to the putt-putt being open, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And is the only office use for the trailer.
All right, we still have, open to the public. If there's anyone else that would like to step forward? Seeing none, I'll close the call to the public and bring you back up front and look for a motion, I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve open public hearing number one, consideration of a sketch plan for an accessory building for food service at the existing Tap In's location at 4444 East Grand River Avenue, on the south side of Grand River, west of Parkway Drive. Request is petitioned by Mr. Cade Martin.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I will email that sign four minutes to you, and you can hand it to your ass.
Yeah, exactly. No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest, you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Public hearing number two, requested to withdraw from the agenda.
Yes, it was discussed. I have the tree ordinance almost ready to go. But then when I looked at the cost, and there's more work I want to do in that section, which is the fuel storage. I want to get that ordinance done, and I also want to do the wetland ordinance. I want to update that. And there are some other items in there that we need to update, from, you know, Michigan DEQ to Eagle, to their new rules about marina permits. So I took it off because I want to do that whole section.
Okay.
In its entirety.
All right, so it'll be a couple of months before we see it?
I'm hoping not that long, but on my luck, yes.
So all of those are, fall under Article 13?
Yes.
So how do we remove this from the agenda then, or get past it? Do we make a motion to?
I think you can make a motion to
Table or
To, no, you want to
Withdraw the agenda?
Just remove it from the agenda. I just want to be clean and transparent to the public, so I think we could do that.
Okay. Do I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to remove open public hearing number two, request to withdraw the agenda.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously, and we're on the public hearing number three. Request for approval to distribute, uh, distribute notice to intent to plan for purposes of the master plan upon as required per Section 125.3839, parentheses two, of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Approval of distribution of notice of intent to plan is what we're talking about. So what are we talking about, Amy?
We, I want to make sure that you are okay with the mailing of this, letters to go out. And then I, we are supposed to be getting our survey questions hopefully by the end of the week from
Yep.
Bishop Webster.
Is a letter in this packet of information?
The letter is in the packet. Yes, I have it up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Page nine.
Who is this letter going to go to? All the residents of Genoa Township?
No. This goes to all of the neighboring communities.
That's right.
It would go to
Well, this master plan is going to be for
We have to follow state statute. State statute requires that it goes, it will not go to everybody in the township.
Okay.
No, not yet. This goes to the county. It will go to our neighboring communities. It will go to, I believe, the airport. I don't have the port, the act in front of me. It'll go to, I believe, the schools. So this is what the letter will go to.
So this goes to government organizations that may be impacted by decisions we make?
Correct. Yes. And then public notice will come out when we get closer to, you know, our survey questions, you know, what, where do we want to focus? What survey questions do we want to ask? That's when it will go out to the public.
Okay.
Can I have a question for you? Because it's a notice of intent to plan. Is there a timeframe that when you send this out to when you have to actually initiate this? Or is it, it can be for months, for years? Do we know?
There's no timeframe in the statute.
I'm sorry, I don't have my
It's the very first step in the process. You have to submit this notice before you can start the planning process.
It just looks, when you're reading like this, like there's going to be a copy. If you want to ask for a copy, it says, "A copy of the draft plan will be emalable to you for your review and comment in advance of the public hearing."
Correct.
Correct.
So they just need to look for the public hearing?
We will supply them with a copy.
Yep.
Everybody on this list that gets this notice will also get a copy of the plan when the draft is prepared, and you all have authorized it to the board, and the board has authorized it to release to the public. So they will, these folks on this list will directly either get a hard copy mailed, or what's more commonplace now is you ask them, if they're okay electronically, just email them a PDF of it.
And in the meantime, the second paragraph says, "To welcome you to the following," "We welcome you to follow the progress of the plan updated on the website." And so it could, potentially, this letter could be the first thing that's up there as far as notice to follow.
Correct.
That's your public notice. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm okay with this, and obviously follows state statute. But as a gripe, it strikes me that we have to give pre-notice to agencies that don't give us pre-notice about anything. So I think about the schools specifically. Or Semtag, or they can build huge buildings, or, you know, the DEQ that cut down a bunch of trees five years ago. And it just strikes me that they want pre-notice about our activities, and yet we'll go and literally strip mine parts of our community or put massive buildings up about 20 feet from our roads with with zero consideration and zero knowledge of it prior to it. So it just strikes me, that's all, it's a gripe, I'll just share it here.
Just even by all of your, you know, abutting communities, and even the counties, the county did their own plan too. They all had to notify the township when they were going through this same process. And honestly, nothing has changed, this is the same exact thing you guys did
Mm-hmm.
two and a half, three and a half years ago. Same exact, probably the same exact letter.
Yeah.
Cause nothing's changed.
I didn't get the county level, I'm not thinking anyway, but the s- school system, the schools, I mean, the DNR, DEQ, just, you know, they do whatever they want, and we have to live with the results.
Right, yeah, we have no jurisdiction over what the schools do.
Right? Yeah, so.
Okay, so we do, do we give you a permission?
No, how did I have it? I'm sorry.
To approve distributing the notice of intent to plan?
I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve open public hearing number three, the request to approve to distribute the notice of intent to plan for the proposed master plan update as required by section one-twenty-five dot three-eight, three-nine parentheses two of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Second. I have two seconds, much support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we pass unanimously, and we move on.
Excuse me, sir, I think you should do a call to the public.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, for this, okay. Patty would like us to do a ca- can I get your name in there? No. I'd like to make a call to the public at this time for anyone to discuss this issue further. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up front and close the call to the public, and we have a motion on, on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we pass unanimously, and we're on to the staff report. If that's okay, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As of right now, I do not have any items for the June meeting.
Okay.
I do have, like, if Sea Hills was just dropped off today for their final.
Okay.
So I'll have to go back through planning commission and township board for their final deals.
All right.
So, that will be on July, which I will, the township manager might be staffing that meeting. Just so that you know.
All right, anything else? All right?
Amy, do you have anything on, um, the joint meeting between the trustees and the planning commission for the master plan? Does that date?
No, it has not, we are waiting to get the survey questions.
From the giffles?
Correct, yeah, and it's been, it's been very difficult to try to get a meeting put together. Just everybody is so busy with their schedules.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as soon as we get those, we will attempt to schedule another meeting. We always try to look at the fourth Monday of the month. Um, and unfortunately, this fourth Monday is Memorial Day, I believe. And then we would be looking at maybe June, but if we don't have a meeting for the, if we don't have, um, stuff for the June meeting, maybe we can make it the June meeting, if the other boards can participate for our June planning commission meeting. So don't book any vacations yet.
Already have. Won't be here, wait first week of June, too late.
I'm out for June ninth.
Okay.
All right, uh, members discussion, oh no, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes from April fourteenth, plan of the, the mission meeting?
So, um, page two of the minutes, um, Brighton Area Fire Authority, their letter is dated April seventh, not the second. And then Mrs. Burns stated, "The applicant has addressed her previous comments," um, and her letter dated eighth, noting the cross easement would be a benefit to the site. I believe the letter stated, um, that comments, "Drive will be extended to the property line within the existing cross-access easement and completion of the cross access, cross-access drive by the adjacent property owner should be done as part of this project." I can send you this comment that should.
I would, I would be able to find it.
Okay, yes, it's right in her letter.
So what you said, I didn't put all of her comments in here?
It, it was, um, it, I think what should be included is, is her verbiage that says that, um, "The drive will be extended to the property line with the existing cross-access agreement." This is in her letter specifically.
Right, I think what I just did was said what she said at the meeting, but I will add her actual comment.
Okay, and then, um, public hearing number two, let me find that. First paragraph, second to the last comment, it says, "E-light."
I'm not sure where you are, oh, I see you up in here.
And then number five, um, Mrs. Burns' letter dated, oh, that was it. So that's just, uh, approve the minutes with those notations to be changed.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, we pass unanimously, and we will look to, let's see, member discussion, Livingston County Planning Master Plan.
You, uh, you requested to have that, to discuss that?
Oh, yeah, what we, what we had talked about was the email that was sent to all of us. I thought, I thought it was the last meeting that we were gonna do that, and then I didn't, I didn't prepare for this meeting.
I did it for the, for the main meeting, you requested it as a discussion, so I wasn't sure what your idea was, I think.
Well, my idea was that everybody would have their own say, if they wanted to send back an email, but we could all discuss what we thought, which generally, uh, churn the water a little bit, and we get a little bit more out of it than just individually acting alone, so that's, but I don't know that we have the information to talk about this evening here. What, what was, what was the gist of that, uh, email?
The email was, I'll actually have it. I did receive comment, I believe, from four members, bless you. The three questions were, "What type of development do you anticipate occurring in your township over the next ten years? Where do you anticipate the development type listed above to occur in your township? Specific cross streets are best, what we anticipate is possible? What in your township, what is your township residents' consensus opinion on this anticipated growth? Positive or negative and why?"
Is that something we're, we're ready to discuss tonight, though? I, I envisioned this as be- as being a foreshadowing the week before, or, or the month before, and have everybody have their stuff prepared, and it sounds like we didn't, there's four of the seven that already did it, so.
There is.
Yeah, I guess, those of us, I didn't do it, uh, so if there's anybody else that hasn't, I guess we could do it on our own, like the others.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I sent an email out, so I figured you guys.
Where was the email, this review?
Yes.
It was a couple of months ago, wasn't it? Yeah, with a date forecasted.
It was sent out on March nineteenth.
Yes.
Yeah, something like that, my intent was to have everybody discuss it here, so that we could play off of each other, um.
Well, I, I apologize, cause I didn't like.
Okay, well. Those of us who didn't take the time to do it the first time, we can do it online just easily, okay. So I will pass that up and go on to adjournment, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, go home.